I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. Tonight we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Sarah Austin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbout.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Tonight we'll begin announcements and presentations. Brooke Ellen?
Oh, I can go first?
You want the wireless? Too bad. We know you don't need it.
Right, I don't need these. So, we are at my favorite part of the event, of our Blues Brews and Barbecue event that we had in August, is the end, when I get to hand out all the checks. So, we appreciate all of you being here for that. This year was a stellar year. We did a, we had more volunteers, we had more vendors, we had more everything. So, I think that each year that this event grows, it gets harder and harder to find volunteers to staff our event, and we are very fortunate in the City of Westland that we have so many willing people who are willing and able to be at this event, whether they know if they're getting money or not, which seems to be a con on my part, but I greatly appreciate that you all trust me, you'll get a check at the end. So, we greatly appreciate that. Mayor, I just want to thank you and your administration team, and of course, the city and everybody for all their help with this event. Would you like to do the honors or say a few words?
Well, thank you, Brooke Ellen, and, excuse me. This is an incredible event that we could not do without an incredible partnership with the Westland Chamber of Commerce. So, when you said that this is your favorite part, that it's over, that means that next week we have our first meeting for next year's Blues Brews and Barbecue, so. All right, that has to be at your house, then. All right, so with that, we want to thank all the community groups that participated. This year, we think we had our best year ever. I know we say that every year, but this year, the weather cooperated with us, so we had, we had more sponsors this year, we had more participants this year, and at the end of the day, I think we had some of our best fireworks ever, too. So, we're gonna pass out, we're gonna call up the organizations, we'd ask that one person from each organization come up and receive your check. We're gonna kinda line everybody up along here, then afterwards, once everybody has their checks, we're actually gonna ask you to head over to the grand ballroom, and then Craig, welcome back, and WLND is gonna get a picture of everybody, and then we can get individual pictures of each of your groups, too, if you want to put in your newsletters or on your websites. We really have to thank all of our sponsors. I have a list of sponsors, but I'll do those in my closing comments tonight. But the last thing is I want to talk about is, the volunteer piece is key, and tonight we're gonna be giving away a lot of proceeds to help those volunteers, but this year's volunteer coordination effort was led by our city council president, James Godbout, and he also had the help of councilman Mike Londo, so thank you both for your help. I know it's a lot of, a lot of efforts. I won't say it's herding cats, but it's pretty close, so they did a great job. So with that, Brooke Ellen, are you ready to start calling them up? Westland Youth Assistance? That's why I should've put my glasses on. The WYA, do we have a representative here tonight? We have a check on behalf of Blues Brews and Barbecue for $1,000. Can we ask Brian Harnos to step forward and collect this one? Next up is the Inspire Theater. We have a check for $1,250. The Westland Democratic Club, we have a check for $1,500. Those fancy t-shirts. I like that. The Westland Rotary, we have a check for $1,300. So you get to keep the small checks, but you gotta give the big checks back tonight. Next up is the Norway Citizens Council. We have a check for $1,400. Thank you. The John Glenn Cheer Team, $1,500. About Councilman Londo, you wanna come down and accept the John Glenn Cheer? He's been working on his routine, so why you guys wanna try it out real quick, Mike? You been working on your routine, you wanna try it out? St. John's Episcopal Church, check for $1,500. The Westland Lions Club, we have a check for $1,750. The Westland Civitans, we have a check for $2,500. So there's a method to the madness on how much money you get. It definitely comes down to how many people you bring and how many hours they work, so we appreciate everybody's help there. And the last one is the Westland Area J.C.'s, a check for $3,500. What's that? So we have more small checks than we do big checks. So, Brooke Ellen, I'm gonna pass the microphone, you can take it from there.
I was just too cheap to order big checks, 'cause I figured you guys would want money in your pocket, so. Can I have the Westland Grange, please? $750. I'll get it to you. And then we have the Westland Historical Commission. Do we have a representative from them tonight? Okay, we'll give it to Brian. Westland Goodfellows, $750. Our Westland Police Explorers, $500. Our Norway Boxing Club, $200. And then, Westland Youth Assistance, for $500. Did I get everybody? No checks for you? Well, again, thank you guys very much. This event certainly couldn't be done without you and your organization, and I appreciate you guys helping out and always saying yes when I call, instead of hanging up the phone on me. And again, Mayor, thank you so much for the great partnership that the chamber has with the city. We greatly appreciate that, and we look forward to next year.
Well, thank you. Give them all a big round of applause. So if we can ask you to maybe head over to the grand ballroom with your checks, and we'll get a quick picture. Maybe somebody can take one, the John Glenn Cheer one, for Councilman Londo? Thank you, everybody.
Brian, before you leave, why don't you go next?
Hello, everybody, City Council. Thanks for having me. Just a few updates. I got five minutes from the mayor, so I gotta make this quick. First, we'd like to say that we have Mike Madonna Ice Arena officially open for business today, so we're excited about that. We have a free Learn to Skate this Friday, 5:30 to 6:50 September 7th. Also, Saturday, September 8th, 9:00 a.m. to 10:20 a.m. So if you're ever interested in learning how to skate, come on out. Those are two free days. We also have our wonderful Timbits program, that is for four to nine-year-olds to learn how to play hockey. That's every Saturday, 10:30 to 11:20. We also have adult drop-in hockey, sticks and pucks, open skates, Tuesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. You can see all of that at www.cityofwestland.com, underneath the Parks and Recs page. All these flyers that I'm gonna mention tonight are out on the security's desk as well, so please grab them on your way out, if you're interested in any of them. We have Beaumont's Diabetes Prevention Program. Did you know that 58% of new cases of type 2 diabetes can be prevented through programs such as these? These are held at our own Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. They are, information session is Wednesday, September 19th, 6 to 7 p.m. And then classes begin Wednesday, October 3rd, 6 to 7 p.m. You can view more of this information, flyer outside on the security desk or at Beaumont.org. Three, we have, I'm very excited for this one, our Westland, Healthy Westlands' First Annual Fall Fitness Festival at Tatten Park. That's Saturday, September 15th, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. So what we've done is, we've partnered with Beaumont Health, Wayne Westland School System, and this is gonna be our first event ever for Fall Fitness Festival. Come on out, it's 11 p.m., I'm sorry, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. We have different dance classes going on, we have zumba from the senior center, we have cardio drumming, we have speakers doing live sessions with any questions you may have, we have doctors there to provide any questions on your health. We have about 22 vendors set that day. We have the Michigan National Guard gonna be there with their big blow-up obstacle course. We have events for kids. It's our first annual. We're very excited with partnership with Beaumont Health and our Westland Community Health Group to put this on. It's gonna be a great event. Number four on my agenda is our Westland Heroes Battle of the Badges Charity Basketball Game. That's gonna be September 15th as well, the same day. That's at 1 p.m. at Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. I will be your ref, so chiefs, the bidding starts tonight. Just kidding. Dodgeball wasn't pretty, we're hoping for a closer game in basketball this year. And that's a great event, proceeds go to charity, so we'll have food for sale that day, donations are accepted. That's gonna be another great day where police fire, the fire department, in a friendly game of basketball, so we're looking forward to that. Also, our H2O Zone, we're gonna have two free days. That's gonna be this Saturday and Sunday, September 8th and 9th, 11 a.m. to 8 p.m. So we're looking at a warm September, so come out and cool off at our beautiful H2O Zone, here at Old City Hall Grounds, right behind there at 1901 North Carlson. Our concessions will be open, enjoy the beautiful park. And lastly, we're gonna have the Wayne Westland Soccer League playing all of their home games this fall in September and October, at our beautiful fields at Central City Park, so we're looking forward to that. Most of those games are gonna be every Saturday and Sunday through September and October. So thank you very much for your time. Everything I talked about, the flyers are out on the security desk, please grab them on your way out. Thank you. Sorry? Yep, I'll go around. Thank you.
Charles?
Okay, good evening. Thanks for giving me a little bit of time this afternoon or this evening. So what I wanted to touch base with everyone about is, I think back in May, we had the conversation during one of the council study sessions about the vision workshop that's coming up this September. So I wanted to kinda give you guys an overview of, you know, what that, what's going on with that. So, September 12th through the 15th here at City Hall, we're gonna be conducting a vision workshop or a charrette for the city. And this vision workshop will be basically a blueprint for what we'd like to see going forward for the Ford Road Corridor for the next, you know, 20 to 50 years or so. This is gonna be obviously a huge event for the city as far as what happens next. So, the reimagining of Ford Road Corridor is gonna be, so that's from Ford Road to the east of, to Benoy, all the way west up to Frontage, Frontage Road, so that's just east of Lots. There's gonna be, so part of the study is gonna, it will include two special study areas, which, one of them is gonna be the former City Hall site, and then the other area is gonna be east of Newburgh, from Ford Road, south down to Marquette. So, the two companies that are gonna be doing the study for us is McKenna and Gibbs. So again, those were the two companies that were at the city council study session. The workshops are gonna be open to the public. We've been, you know, soliciting and, you know, requesting public involvement on all levels, through our website, through flyers, through, you know, public service announcements as well as phone calls. Over the four days, there's gonna be a bus tour that'll be included as part of the study, so that'll start on the 12th. There'll be public presentations about mobility and place-making, as well as just, you know, retail as far as, and, you know, how we're gonna be arriving at, what that vision's gonna be for, not just Ford Road, but the, again, the former City Hall. And I think, you know, one of the big things that I've, in conversations that I've had with people, is really just emphasizing how, what a great opportunity that we have as a city, when you look at 40 acres of contiguous land in Wayne County that's, you know, well positioned between 96 and 94, you know, it's probably, you know, not probably, I just think it's one of the best opportunities in the state, and it's right here in Westland. So the design workshop is gonna be open to the public, so there'll be public participation. It's gonna take place in the grand ballrooms A and B. So not only will the public have the opportunity to engage, they'll also be able to watch and participate, you know, and see exactly what the process is from these planning companies. We've got five different focus groups that we're working on completing, and that will consist of youth groups, seniors, neighborhood associations, along with business and property owners, not just on Ford Road, but also, you know, people that are in the general area. There's gonna be daily meetings with the, with our steering committee, thanks to Councilman Hersberg and Hammond for participating in that with us. So this'll be, you know, again, on a daily basis, we'll have our steering committee that's gonna be, you know, just, they'll get a download at the end of each day, and then help us continue to move in the right direction to determine what's best for the site and for the city. We've also got a stakeholders meeting and a committee that's gonna be part of this whole process, which will include, you know, obviously, people from the city as well as zoning, the zoning group and the planning departments, just to make sure that as the two companies are putting together this, this plan for us, that any, you know, special considerations that need to be made for, not just Ford Road, but the, but the study areas, you know, they know upfront as we're going through this whole process. And then on the fourth day, on Saturday, there's gonna be a public reveal that takes place, so that'll be an opportunity for not only the people that have participated in the process, but again, the public to see what the reveal's gonna be, and just understand, so at the end of the four days, we're not, still doesn't get us to 100% of what the plan is gonna be, but it takes us 80, 85% through the process. And then once we're done, which will probably take another six weeks to two months after this workshop, then we'll be in a position, you know, as a city, to put this out to the public, and then pursue, you know, qualified developers that are, that are able to execute the plan.
Thanks.
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff? Sorry, Charles?
I have a question, Charles.
Yes.
Just briefly, can you disclose the date and time for the steering committee meetings? I did ask the mayor initially, as soon as we had the meeting, that McKenna came into and asked if I could sit on that steering committee. Due to my construction experience and being a business owner specializing in real estate and construction, I did ask him, as soon as we had that meeting, and although I'm learning tonight that he has, again, appointed two other councilmen to this committee, I, he cannot block me from attending this meeting. So I would like the date and time, and I'll just sit in as an observer, because I am not gonna be put in a position to where I'm without information while other people are allowed to serve, and I would like to be a part of the changes that are taking place in Westland as well. So if you don't have that information tonight, if you can email it to me, I absolutely plan to attend this meeting.
I can tell you, I mean, the information, the steering committee meets the 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th, 10 o'clock in the morning to 11 a.m.
Okay, and that'll be here at City Hall?
Yeah.
Okay, are those the, are there any future meetings planned after that, or is that just the?
That's, that's the process. So that timeframe right there is a process to get us, like I said, about 85% through the, through the vision plan. And then after that, and then again, there's, and your other question, as far as what's information that's out there for the public, it's all on our website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so everything's out there.
Thank you.
To the chair, to Mrs. Green, just for clarification, I was not attempting to block you from anything. This, these were two spots that were, that were, each of the boards, the ZBA, the DDA, the city council, they all appointed people to this board. This board, all, every one of these meetings, including the steering committee meetings, are open to the public, and I would encourage you, and I think Mr. Howes was also encouraging all of you to participate, so you can come to any one of those meetings that you'd like to.
Okay.
Through the chair to the mayor, specifically in terms of the steering committee, this is the, I don't know how many times I have asked to participate, and I specifically used the word blocking, because when the steering committee was, when you formed the committee who would participate in the master plan, I asked to sit in on that meeting, although you did not allow me to participate, or you didn't appoint me. I asked to sit in on that meeting, you never gave me the information. I called the company that did the master plan for the city, which is OHM. Since you didn't give me the information, and all of this is documented in email, I contacted OHM directly. I had to go outside of the City of Westland. I have had the FOIA information that you have refused to give me. I called OHM directly to get the date and time, and OHM made me aware that Bruce, who reports to you, told them not to give me the information, because as a contractor for the City of Westland, which you, you've been working with for years before I was elected to council, I called them when I could not get the information from you. I have sent you and the deputy mayor, the council and the city attorney, information in terms of what occurred with OHM, and I have also made you all aware that I will take legal action if my civil rights continue to be violated. So as it relates to the steering committee with, that Mr. Howes spoke of tonight, I'm stating here at council that I plan to attend, because I don't want to go to him to find out that a city employee, an executive, informed a contractor to withhold information from me as an elected official in the city. So now that we're on the same page, it, I'm stating that tonight, because that is exactly what happened, and you all verified that that's what happened. So I appreciate you stating that here at council, but that has not been the process that I have experienced, so I'm making it plain that I will be at the steering committee, and although I'm not on the committee, I will be in the room to observe and hopefully to, to learn more about the process, so thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
I do think this is actually a first, that we've had back and forth on presentations before.
I agree, and I was about to call point of order, and I apologize for the, for the lack of decorum during announcements and presentations. We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. I'm sorry, Mr. Steiers. I apologize.
No worries. Thank you, President Godbout, I appreciate it. City Council, Mayor Wilde, the citizens of Westland, thank you for the opportunity to come here and, in an informal way, yet sincere and genuine way, express my thanks and appreciation for all you've done for the Norway Boxing Club, Mayor Wilde, for your past and ongoing support of the program, along with your right hand, Joanne Campbell. It's amazing what we've been able to do in three years with the Norway Boxing Gym for our young men and women, both inside the boxing ring, inside the classroom, and inside life itself. We've truly made changes in these kids' lives and through a scholarship program that we're in the process of trying to assemble, hopefully change the directory for some of these kids' lives and pursuing college that otherwise wouldn't be afforded to them, so thank you for that support. To Director Harnos, thank you for making the Mike Madonna Ice Arena available to us to host our first annual Father's Day boxing tournament. It was impressive, and the talent that was in the ring, as well as the gyms we were able to draw from places such as Chicago, Cincinnati, Cleveland, and Toronto. Attendance wasn't what we wanted to be, but, you know, first tries, Father's Day weekend, and bringing gyms from out of state, I think all led to that, so lessons learned, but nonetheless, I think it was a success. And to Chief Jurdisx, I want to thank you and the department for the generous donation you made to our gym. Prior to that donation, our guys didn't have sweat suits to wear as they travel, and now when we travel, as we just did a few weeks ago in Atlanta, Georgia, we now represent the community of Norway and the City of Westland in style and fashion, so thank you very much for that donation. Mr. President, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for all you do. We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Ray?
Hi there, everyone. Anyway, this evening, I was just checking this over, I always do support the fire department. I know they're doing a boot drive again at 1279 to hold their annual, September 13th through September 15th, and I know that's a rough corner up there, so fire people, be careful up there, 'cause sometimes drivers do kinda... You know, a fireman, there was a fireman that got hit up in Lansing before, I'm just saying, it's just, be careful out there. Do support you guys, and bring them back alive. And, I saw something else. On Newburgh, it's G here, east side of Newburgh, they're doing structuring for the approximately 250 feet of Newburgh Road from sidewalks I was looking at. Are there going to be curb sidewalks, too, for people to use wheelchairs? You don't wanna forget about people that use wheelchairs or walkers to get around. That's important, too, I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Richard Graham, Westland, also with Move Westland Forward. Regarding the consent calendar and item C, approval for bid of services related to the construction and installation of an exterior digital sign at the Westland Senior Center for amount not to exceed over $31,000. Was curious about that, I guess why we needed it? Does it have to be done? That type of price, especially when, you know, we, we need police officers, but was curious about that amount, why it's being done. A citizen also asked, uh, and I have no idea about this, but I guess there's a covered-up sign by the farmer's market, why, why that sign couldn't be used for, uh, the senior center? And, and again, that was a question raised, uh, by a citizen. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. There was a question on item G. Doug?
Counsel President?
Yes, Doug? Uh, sidewalks will be installed, are going to fill in gaps roughly from Joy Road to Kennedy Drive. Everything will be put into, uh, federal standards because we did get some grant money through M.D.A., so everything will be ADA standards, um, and all quality standards.
And then on item C?
I take that one, Counsel President. With regards to item C, this project is for the removal and replacement of the existing exterior sign at the senior center with the new digital sign as it's described. Money was put in the budget for it, and budget was approved by council, so we've bid out this project and are accepting, or recommending the proposal from various signs. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any questions from the council? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Request from Westland firefighters, local 1279 to hold their annual MDA, fill the boot drive, September 13th through 15th, 2018, at the intersection of Wayne and Ford Roads. Request from Lutheran High School, Westland, to hold their homecoming parade Friday, October 5th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m., beginning at the back of the high school, proceeding south on Farmington, west on DeCawen, and turning right into the parking lot. Also requesting police assistance to block traffic during the parade. Approval of bid for services related to the construction and installation of an exterior digital sign at the Westland Friendship Center. Administration recommends Virez environmental graphics and signs, amount not to exceed Approval of bid for leak detection and water audit report services. Administration recommended the low bidder, American Leak Detection, amount not to exceed Approval to outfit the Department of Community Development's F-250 truck with a snowplow attachment, purchased from Cannon Truck Equipment, amount not to exceed $6,916. Approval of contract extension with Statewide Security Transport for the housing and transportation of prisoners for the Westland Police Department. This agreement shall be effective for a one-year period with a one-year extension option and will commence on September 5th, 2018, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city. The last item on the consent calendar is item G, approval of M.D.A. contract number 185391 for concrete sidewalk construction work and irrigation system work along the east side of Newburgh from Joy Road southerly for approximately 250 feet, and along Newburgh Road from approximately 60 feet north of McKinney Drive to approximately 115 feet north of Russell Drive, and all other necessary related work. Total cost, cost of this project is $218,600. The city's share of this cost is $49,314, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Moving to new business, item one, minutes of the regular meeting held August 20, 2018.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hammond. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Councilman Londo?
Obeying due absence.
President Godbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two, minutes of study session held August 20, 2018.
Is there a motion by Councilman Hersberg? Is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Obeying due absence.
Councilman Godbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item three, approval of proposed rezoning from our five single-family residential to CB3, general commercial business, part of parcel 034990016004001800100190010020001 and 0021001, south side of Wayne, east, I'm sorry, south side of Warren, east of Wayne Road, planning department number 1632C. Planning Commission recommends approval and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there? Supported by Councilman Londo. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Um, this is the site, um, in question, it's the former Fire Mountain, for those that have been around longer like me, the old Ryan Steakhouse. Um, it's a site that contains a little over six acres, surrounded by both commercial and residential properties. Um, there are really two cases on the agenda tonight for this, the first is a rezoning, that's why I brought this picture up for you, uh, just from a reference standpoint, north is to the top, that puts Warren at the top of the picture, Wayne would be to the left and to the west. The yellow rectangle is the existing building, um, that is out there right now, and that dashed line shows you the current, uh, line between what is commercially zoned and residentially zoned property. And as you can see from this image of the existing site plan, uh, there's commercial use of that southerly property. Um, when the site plan was approved by council back in 1988, uh, the ordinance allowed commercial parking in residential districts. Uh, with the new site plan that is coming, uh, they are looking at expanding this building, uh, it's existing, uh, building, um, of about 11,500 square feet, they're looking at adding an additional 28,000 square feet, uh, to the footprint that you see here. And as such, they're looking to basically create a consistent zoning throughout this property, uh, consistent with the zoning, the commercial zoning at the north end of the site. Um, as you know, uh, Mr. President, there are, um, uh, specific criteria, um, they deal with use and zoning in the area, uh, they also deal with things like, uh, the, um, development trends in the area, as well as, uh, the master plan designation. Uh, this is in our shop and dine district, uh, so commercial use of the property, uh, from a zoning standpoint and from a, uh, use standpoint is consistent. Um, the master plan, uh, does designate this for shop and dine district use, um, and the most important, um, item, I think, relative to this is that rear end of that property is being used for commercial, there is, uh, no possibility of that property being used for its, uh, current zoning of our five, so the CB3 zoning, um, is, um, is consistent with that as well. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed this proposal, the rezoning, at its August 8th meeting, found that, um, that, or, excuse me, afforded a recommendation for approval based upon the following reasons. One, the rezoning will provide for zoning designation that will allow for additional development and reuse of the site with the commercial use that's consistent, uh, with commercial zoning in the area, it's consistent with the adjacent uses in the area, um, will result in a development that would not otherwise occur under its current zoning designation as the subject property is not suitable for development with single-family homes, and last, the rezoning would not be detrimental to development trends in the area and will have a positive influence in, in the surrounding properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, not much, uh, just, uh, that, um, we are, uh, planning a multimillion dollar banquet hall. I have purchased both properties that left, to the left and right of the, um, of the existing structure. Uh, I've done, uh, I've spent about a hundred grand so far in just, uh, basically, uh, all types of plans, but, in, in addition to purchasing the properties. And, uh, in the previous, uh, meeting, um, I informed everyone that this was now, you know, fi, bank financed, so I would not be building a building and then have it become vacant similar to the other property. We've done our studies, and this area deserves a first-class banquet hall.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dis... Oh. Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbaugh. I guess through the chair to Bruce Thompson or the petitioner. Um, in the packet, I saw some residents that addressed concerns about the buffer, have you been able to address those with those residents?
Um, yes, uh, we, we had a discussion outside, and, uh, all of them, at the end of the, the talk, wanted the buffer without a, a wall.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item four, approval of site plan for proposed addition to the commercial building for Westland Banquet Hall Center, south side of Warren, east of Wayne, planning department number 1632D. The Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Thompson?
Sure. The, um, site plan, again, was reviewed at the August Planning Commission meeting, this is the plan, uh, the packet that you have, this actually is the landscape plan, so as you can see, along the south and the east side of the site, um, Councilman Londo was, was asking about, uh, they're basically providing a, a 20-foot wide buffer strip and creating a green wall. All other a, aspects of this site plan either meet or exceed ordinance requirements, I just do have, uh, a couple more images to show you of what this building is going to look like. It'll be a predominantly brick building, uh, with some burnished block accents, so the white areas are burnished block and, and the remainder of the building will be brick, it'll be, um, quite a, uh, an improvement to this area and quite a redevelopment of the site, as the gentleman mentioned, it's a multimillion dollar investment in our shop and dine district. Uh, but again, the site plan meets or exceeds all ordinance requirements, uh, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you. If you have anything else you wanted to add?
Only that I'm very excited, and, uh, I'm planning, uh, quite a bit of, uh, events here, and I'm, I would like to get to know the city, uh, administration very well and the, uh, councilmen, so we can have a, a first party there.
Thanks. Councilman Hart?
Yeah, through the chair, thank you, uh, to the developers, so, uh, very excited to see the building, uh, it rivals the beauty of our own city hall here, so I guess the, the gauntlet has been thrown, uh, it looks good. Uh, this is also my neighborhood too, so I, I do share some of the excitement for kind of the activity it'll bring to the shop and dine district, but I also do, uh, recognize some of the comments some of the citizens have made, and I just want to get your commitment that you're going to be a good neighbor, uh, with this facility here. Well, with respect to, um, with respect to noise, with respect to cleanliness, and also with respect to the construction phase too, so...
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, uh, uh, I'm a pharmacist, I'm a pharmacist by trade, and I made quite a bit of money, uh, in the state of Michigan, and I, you know, at first I love the state of Michigan, and specifically I love this trade area, you know, I have investments, I have others, people asking me to invest in other cities, but I, 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 um, promise to stay within 30, 40 minutes of where I stay. Uh, I've invested quite a bit in Southfield, you, uh, all of you guys that will come to see my investments in Southfield, uh, all my investments, uh, I usually take, uh, properties that are, uh, that are underdeveloped or underutilized, and I put quite a bit of, uh, investment ideas in them. So, um, I, I run first-class buildings, I own over 200,000 square feet of medical buildings in Southfield, also in the city of Dearborn, so I'm well-known in, in, in the, in the, in the, in the area.
Yeah.
So in terms of promising, I absolutely, I mean, I, I, this is, this is 100% owned by myself, I'm not going to be putting a multimillion dollar building and then create, you know, uh, become a bad neighbor, that's just not my, my class.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
New business, item five, approval of special land use for proposed independent pharmacy, 6019 North Wayne Road, west side of Wayne, north of Ford Road, planning department number 2121D. Planning Commission recommends approval as the proposed use meets the special land use standards of the zoning ordinance.
Motion, motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. This is the center on which the use is proposed to be located, as the clerk indicated, uh, west side of Wayne Road, north of Ford. Um, it's a shopping center that is, um, filled, um, except for the one spot that the petitioner's looking at, taking with a, um, a pharmacy use, um, and that is, um, at the, uh, south end of the building, um, in the, in this particular unit. Um, this is an independent pharmacy, and at, at its last meeting, the Planning Commission did review the case, um, they found that the use is compatible with the uses in the center, uh, the center itself, um, is still in compliance with the approved site plan, so there's adequate parking, adequate access, adequate screening for adjacent uses, um, and in that, uh, the Planning Commission is recommending that, uh, the city council approve this special land use as the use meets all the special land use standards of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Yes. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Are there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
New business, item six, approval of site plan per, for proposed commercial building,
north side of Warren, west of Merriman, planning department number 2203A. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Thompson?
This is a site that the council saw not too long ago, or, um, and proved a rezoning, um, uh, as you can see, this picture was taken quite some time ago, it was actually at the beginning of winter, uh, but it shows the property's surrounding uses. Um, this is the plan, um, it's this, in essence, the same plan that you saw through the rezoning, obviously it has a little bit more detail from a site plan standpoint, um, it has the landscaping, the parking, the screening, the, uh, building, the brick building, dumpster enclosure, lighting, all the, um, components of a site plan, um, that are required, uh, the site plan, uh, meets or exceeds all ordinance requirements, therefore approval is recommended in this case as well, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Petitioner? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Lubianski for John Del Fonzie, who's a little hard of hearing, so I'm stepping in for him. Any questions?
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Yeah. Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks, I just wanted to say thanks for, uh, I, I know maybe last year I was one of the council members that stood against this plan to, uh, build another building here, but I just wanted to thank you guys for getting city sidewalks in. Uh, it's pretty heavy foot traffic over there for residents, as the main entrance to Heinz Park Bike Path is over there as well, so, uh, this is going to be a big improvement to that corner.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Excellent.
New business, item seven, approval of proposed rezoning from CB2 Shopping Center Commercial to CB3 General Commercial, 165 South Wayne Road, southeast corner of Wayne and Cherry Hill, planning department number 2216. Planning Commission recommends approval and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Um, I think this is a very exciting proposal to be able to bring to the council this evening, uh, this is a building that's been sitting vacant for some time, and I think all parties that are involved know that it was, uh, it's a difficult building to fill, um, and we were lucky enough to have a Fortune 500 company, uh, come, uh, to, to, to us and, and make a proposal, and, uh, that's what the Planning Commission reviewed at their last meeting. There's three cases on this site, uh, the first is a rezoning, uh, from the current shopping center zoning district to the CB3, uh, that is specifically due to the fact that, uh, storage, or at least the storage component of this particular use, um, is listed as a special land use in the CB3 and not the CB2. Uh, the other important component to it, I think, um, uh, that in making the consideration is, um, additional shopping center space is really an unrealistic use of this property, additional retail space is an unrealistic use of this property, and so, uh, based on that and the criteria, uh, in the zoning ordinance, what the master plan says for regional use of this property, and all those things that, uh, the Planning Commission, um, is recommending approval, uh, for the rezoning to, uh, CB2 and CB3, or from CB2 to CB3. CB three. I think everybody's pretty familiar with this site. It's predominantly surrounded by commercial uses, includes the former automotive repair site. Actually, that particular tenant has relocated and filled another vacant space in the building, so we get kind of an extra umph out of this deal because now the person that was here, U-Haul taking this over, they've taken over another vacant building in this community. So kind of the domino effect that we expect to see and typically do see when sites are redeveloped. I'll just then go to the site plan very quickly, because I think everybody's familiar with what's around it. North is to the top of the picture, that's Cherry Hill, Wayne Road to the left. The larger rectangle is the existing former Kmart building. This building will be used for climate-controlled storage. The former auto center site will be used for both retail and office use for the U-Haul Mobility Center that's being proposed, as well as some additional leasable retail space at the back of the building. Some of the more exciting components of this use, and I say that because here, the city council just approved the master plan and the planning commission did, and that master plan included a component for non-motorized transportation and different forms of transportation. And this particular use includes car charging stations, electric vehicle charging stations. It includes bike share, includes car share. All of these are new components, kind of twenty-first-century components of a modern city. And so I think that from a use standpoint, when you look at the special land use, all aspects of this particular use, you know, either meet or exceed the standards that the special land use ordinance has, but I think provide some unique benefits that this community just doesn't have, again, that's in tune with that master plan. And then I'll get to the site plan when we get to that, to that case. But from a standpoint of the rezoning, the property clearly is no longer suitable for use for shopping center use or for retail use. The commercial use proposed is consistent with zoning, consistent with commercial uses in the area. It's consistent with the master plan. So in this particular case, the planning commission is recommending that the council approve the rezoning from CB two to CB three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eight, approval of special land use for proposed U-Haul Smart Mobility Center, one six five South Wayne Road, southeast corner of Wayne and Cherry Hill, Planning Department number two two one six A. Planning Commission recommends approval as this proposed use meets the special land use standards of the zoning ordinance.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Mr. Thompson?
Nothing really to add, just to what I said before. They reviewed the site, the planning commission, and found that the use meets or exceeds all the special land use standards in the ordinance. Therefore, approval is recommended of that special land use, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item nine, approval of site plan for proposed U-Haul Smart Mobility Center, one six five South Wayne Road, southeast corner of Wayne and Cherry Hill, Planning Department number two two one six B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Just a couple of points. I know you have the site plan in your packet, and so you've seen all the different components and where they're laid out. First, I'd just like to mention that the petitioner is proposing the DDA Streetscape treatment along both Cherry Hill and the Wayne Road side of the site, so that's a great improvement. It'll be consistent with some of the other recent developments in that area. And the other thing that I wanted to show you is they provided a couple of renderings of kind of before and after what the building is going to look like, or both buildings, if you will, before and after. There will be some exciting components to this, something we haven't seen before. I think some of these buildings, some good graphics, community-oriented graphics, I think, that really kind of set this building out from some of the other newer buildings in the site or in the surrounding area. And then this would be the building, the former auto repair building up front where their retail and their office use is going to be. The site plan that you have in this case, sir, meets or exceeds all ordinance requirements. Again, therefore, approval is recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I apologize to the petitioner?
Good evening. Jeff Stefani, company president for Michigan for U-Haul. Mr. Thompson summed it up pretty well. I'm looking forward to starting a partnership with the city of Westland.
Thanks. Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Councilman Hersberg?
Sure, I just had a quick question. The site plan, it shows that this property now borders Marshall School. Is there going to be any fence, special fencing, or some sort of barrier you're going to put to keep the students from coming into your facility, or?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe there is already a fence there.
To keep the existing?
Yeah.
Are there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck and thanks for taking over that site.
Yeah, thank you all.
New business, item ten, approval of proposed rezoning from R five Single Family Residential to CB three General Commercial, northwest corner of Inkster and Van Born Roads, Planning Department number two two one seven. Planning Commission recommends approval and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support by Councilman Londo? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. This is the property, as the clerk had indicated, north side of Van Born and west of Inkster. It's surrounded by both commercial and residential uses. In this particular case, it's a site plan that proposes a brand-new family dollar store and all of the amenities for a commercial site. The actual rezoning, which is the first case, it's actually a very small portion of the property, the part that you see here in this hatched area, and if you compare it to where that site plan is going to go, it's in essence where their detention system and open space is going to be as part of. There's a home that exists, excuse me, on this larger parcel back here. That home sits approximately right here. They're splitting off just a small portion of the rear of that property and attaching it to the commercial frontage on Van Born Road. So both the rezoning and the land division are kind of consistent there. They deal with the same one-hundred-and-fifty-by-one-hundred-and-fifty piece of property. So it's this area that would be rezoned from single-family to CB three. All of the property that actually fronts on Van Born in this area has that same CB three zoning. Again, applying the same standards that the ordinance has for rezonings, the planning commission found that the rezoning will allow for development of new commercial use that is consistent with commercial zoning and uses in the area and will not have detrimental effect on development trends, will be a positive influence on the public interest. Therefore, approval is recommended for the rezoning, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eleven, approval of site plan for proposed family dollar, northwest corner of Inkster and Van Born Roads, Planning Department number two two one seven A. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support by Councilman Hart? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. The site plan is a plan that does meet or exceed all ordinance requirements. It's a nine-thousand-square-foot building. The one component I did want to point out, because it is adjacent to a single-family home, albeit the home is zoned CB three, they are proposing a vinyl fence that looks like a stone wall, and so that's a little bit different than what the council might normally see. You typically see a vinyl, straight vinyl fence, so felt that that was a nice component added to this. And then it's a brick building with some block accents. We actually have had two buildings very similar to this built in the city of Westland in the last five years, so this is a front facade that the council's seen before and it meets all the ordinance requirements in that respect. So again, site plan meets or exceeds all ordinance requirements. Approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sam Yaldo. With me is my partner, Jack Yallow, and we're ready to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thanks. Any questions from the council? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, there is currently a family dollar located, and two actually, within less than a mile of this proposed location. One is at Van Born, just beyond John Daly, and another is at Van Born, just north of Merriman, which is the newer, the newest one. Is this one that you're proposing, is this a relocation from either one of those?
Now I can address that. No, that's not. Neither one of our, neither of those stores are going to be closed now.
Okay, so is there a concern in terms of oversaturation that we would have three family dollars within, within less than a half-mile of each other on the same road stretch?
So the Merriman side is about two miles away, actually. Inkster, Middle Belt, and then Merriman. So, and then the John Daly side, I'm not sure exactly how far it is. Generally, they don't keep them within one mile of each other. So Family Dollar is a national New York Stock Exchange company, eighteen thousand stores with their Dollar Tree partner, and they do their own internal studies to determine where they place stores.
Okay.
But in this instance, it won't be a replacement for an existing store.
Okay, yeah, that was just my concern in terms of the possibility of oversaturation with some of the vacancies that we have seen in the city, that that would not pose an issue in terms of us already having a good amount of that same store in the area.
Sure.
So thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item twelve, approval of proposed land division and combination, parcels number zero eight four zero two zero six seven three zero zero zero, zero six seven four zero zero zero, and zero seven four one zero zero zero. Northwest corner of Inkster and Van Born Roads, Planning Department number two two one seven B. Planning Commission recommends approval and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Just a reminder, as I said before, you're basically going to end up with two parcels here, one for the existing home on Inkster Road, one for the new development. Both lots will exceed lot width and lot area standards for the districts that they are in, therefore, approval is recommended.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
New business, item thirteen, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support by Councilman Hersberg? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the audience? Right?
Anyway, you have come up here and say something positively anyway. You know, Aretha Franklin was a very good, I looked her up today, she's very good. R E S P T, and I love it. It's called respect. When she met by, respect with everybody, it doesn't matter what people with wheelchairs, people with different abilities, to all people. All people are welcome, and I like that word. And I'm taking, and I've been taking it to the road, and I've always thought about respect. We should respect one another, and it's very important to me too. Even with, I'm going to Crystal Mountain, matter of fact, but the, got a scholarship from, from my agent, one of my agencies, and I'm going up there to recipient rights. It's about people's rights and learning more about people's rights, and I'm always for people's rights. And I'm traveling anyway. I'm going this way to self-determination and respect and how people are living a life today is very important. In my journey, I'm going to continue driving the system. People's first language is important to me, and I'm taking it everywhere. Facebook, everywhere. Police departments are doing a good job in Westland, and I think you, police department, you guys got good leadership, so does the fire department, because they put their lives out there every day for you people. Thank you.
One on my left? One on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, everyone. Earlier, I'd mentioned I was going to thank our sponsors from the Blues Brews and Barbecue, but it appears that I have left that list there, so we'll make sure that we do that the next meeting. It's quite a big list. Also, city council, thank you for allowing us to bring in the Blues Brews and Barbecue volunteers tonight. I know it took up a little bit of time, but I think it was a good, a good thing. Just a few things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank Bruce Thompson. He just stepped out because he's got planning commission tomorrow, and he had a long night tonight, but he's got a big night tomorrow on the planning commission. Both Bruce and Charles have been doing a great job, and tonight, you saw that we had several new projects. Came into the city, lots of redevelopments, filling the Kmart site with their new Smart Mobility Center, I think is going to be a good addition to the Wayne Road corridor. Also, as Bruce had mentioned, the automotive use that was in the Kmart Automotive Center now has relocated to the Sears Automotive Center, which was vacant behind J.C. Penney's. And of course, the new project on the vacant Fire Mountain Building, which has been vacant now for, it's probably out of all the vacant buildings in the Shop &amp; Dine District, that one's probably been vacant the most. So we're excited about this new multimillion-dollar investment, and we think it's going to be a great addition to the Shop &amp; Dine District and also help us kind of diversify away from retail a little bit there as well. Council, just a quick announcement, the H2O Zone, which just finished out their best year so far since we've opened it up, they're typically open from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend. So the H2O Zone is closed officially for the season, but because we're supposed to get nice weather this weekend, we're actually going to open it back up both Saturday and Sunday. It's going to be free to the public, like a customer appreciation weekend. The H2O Zone will be open from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. both days, and we thank all of our Westland residents and all of our customers that utilize the H2O Zone this year for one of our best years yet. Council, you've probably heard in the media over the last 24 hours that several of the MDOT road projects across the state are being delayed, and our Ford Road project, which is an MDOT project, is one of those that is going to be affected by the ongoing labor dispute. So at this point, we're going to keep those cones close by, you know, hopefully this is something that's going to be wrapped up pretty quick. MDOT had previously promised us that they would have that project wrapped up mid-September, so we're hoping that this labor dispute is short-lived and we can get back on schedule there. So we'll just ask people to give us a little bit of patience as they travel through that part of Westland. One of the things that didn't get a lot of attention on tonight's agenda, but we thank the city council for moving forward and our Department of Public Service for bringing this project to light. Council awarded a bid to American Leak Detection, which they're going to do is they're going to go through the city's 350 miles of water mains. The city of Westland historically has reported about a 15% water loss, and in most communities, you'll probably see that ranging from 10% and it works its way up, especially older communities. Older communities you have, the more aging pipe you have in the ground. So as we continue our neighborhood makeover program, one of the things that we're going to do is we're actually going to go through all the water mains in the city, and they've got acoustic amplifying equipment, which they can actually pinpoint water losses. And so once they pinpoint those, our DPW crews will be going through the city on a priority basis, obviously the larger ones first, but we're actually going to go back and try to fix some of those underground water main leaks that we have. So that would be one of the additional ways that we'll be investing in our neighborhood. So it looks like the project, it's going to start next month, and it takes about 10 to 14 weeks to complete. The cost of the project total was about $68,000, and that will be paid through the water fund, so we'll be asking Ramsey to give council an update as we move forward on that, but thank you for that. Then just the last thing is, this is a note that the city clerk passed to me, is that we received notice that Ed Turner, a former longtime Wayne Westland School Board trustee, has passed, and he's going to be remembered for a long time. He served the community in a lot of different ways. He, he served the community in a lot of different ways. So as we learn more about those arrangements, perhaps we can recognize him in a future meeting. Thank you.
Anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing this evening.
Thanks. Begin council comments. Councilman Johnson?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Landau?
Thanks, President Gabow. I want to start off with the Blues Brews and Barbecue volunteers. I want to thank each and every one of you again. Had an opportunity to work with each and every one of you, and events like this just don't go on without our volunteers. So thank you to each and every one of you for your time, energy, and passion for putting an event on and keeping everything organized. And I was trying to do a little checklist here, I lost track. It looks like we got about over nearly $15,000 going back to our local community groups. So that was just fantastic. 20? Oh, well, I lost track because I had to do the cheerleader thing. Also, I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I did want to publicly thank our Westland Police Department and the communities, the community support that we got for the capture of the arrest of the Wayne County Sheriff Deputy Sergeant Lee Smith's killer. I know you guys all work swiftly and methodically around the clock to ensure the arrest, so thank you again. Also want to thank our Westland Police Honor Guard. They had a big hand in planning Sergeant Lee Smith's funeral and for honoring him at the funeral, along with many other local honor guards. I was able to attend the funeral, and there were some nice tributes for our fallen hero. He will definitely be missed. And again, I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I want to thank my colleagues and the city attorney as well for the three ordinance revisions. I wasn't able to vote on them, but I was able to voice my opinion on them, and I look forward to the, the new ordinance revisions in the coming months that we talked about. As for tonight's meeting, it's nice to see more big investments in our city. The building blocks just keep on coming, and the biggest building block, I believe, is going to be that Ford Road corridor that Charles House talked about. So we really want our public's input on that, so make sure to attend those visiting sessions. If you cannot make the visiting sessions, contact the mayor's office or any one of us up here, and we'll pass on those suggestions to, to the appropriate parties. And went to Cruze and Heinz, it was an amazing event. It was my first time attending. I was blown away by the organization and execution of the event, and I did have a chance to talk to a lot of the, you know, event goers, and they said that they feel that this is the most, the best, the best cruise in Michigan. It's really unique because there's, you know, seven miles of road, no, no stoplights. You have to have 25, the car has to be 25 years or older to go on there. No burnouts, no craziness. Everyone's going, you know, five to 10 miles an hour down there, and everyone had a really good time. So I appreciate Don's invite for coming out to that. Next Thursday is September 13th, is Fall Fest at the All-American Farmers and Artisans Market. They're going to have live music, fresh produce, cider and donuts, and fall and Halloween decorations. I know it's a little crazy to think about Halloween when it's 95 degrees outside, but you can also win a, win a fall floral arrangement from My Ladies Florist. So if you come on out, if you have more info, or want more information, please visit their website at westlandfarmersmarket.com. I've got one more announcement. The city of Westland is offering a free bulk drop-off event for bulk items on September 22nd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Simply bring your items to the DPS Yard located at 37137 Marquette, along with proof of res, proof of residency to dispose of old unwanted items that don't fit inside of your regular black curbside trash bin. This will be the last bulk pickup event due to free special pickup being reinstated in July. If you have more questions on the acceptable items, please call DPS at 728-1770. And then lastly, I just want to welcome back the staff, the students, and families to another school year. I wish you all the best of luck, and I hope you all have an amazing school year. Thanks.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to start by thanking Sarah for leading the pledge tonight. I would also like to let the community know that the Friends of the Library is having another great book sale. It's going to be on Thursday, well, it's going to start on Thursday, September 13th, and it will run from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And that particular day, it's a preview for Friends of the Library members only. However, you can still take advantage of the book sale on Friday, September 14th, and Saturday, September 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, on Sunday, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., hardcover fiction books will be selling for 50 cents, and all paperback books will sell for 25 cents. Would also like to announce that if there are any new precinct delegates who've been elected in the city of Westland or surrounding areas, there will be a precinct delegate training going on if anyone is interested in attending. It's going to be on Thursday, September 6th, so that's going to be in just a couple days. It's going to be at the One Campaign for Michigan Office, and that is held at 4960 Schaefer Road in Dearborn. It is going to begin at 6:00 p.m. with a complimentary dinner, and the meeting will start promptly at 7:00. If you have any questions, you can contact Lisa Hicks Clayton, and Lisa's number is area code 313-348-9848. Again, 313-348-9848. I would also like to announce in his absence, County Commissioner Glenn Anderson normally is here as a representative, and since he was not able to come tonight, I just wanted to remind the community that his coffee hours will resume this month. So if you are able to attend, his coffee hours are the second Monday of every month, so that will be this coming Monday, and it will be at 9:00 a.m. at the Big Boy Restaurant on Wayne Road. I'd also like to remind, well, actually, I'd just like to thank the community. Many of you reach out to me when you have concerns and allow me to assist on your behalf, and I wanted to continue to let the community know that I, there's nothing more that I take pleasure in as a councilwoman than helping the community. And if you would like to reach me, please continue to do so. You can reach me at many different ways, but I'm on Facebook. I have a Councilwoman page. You can find me at Councilwoman Tasha Green and send me a message there. Many residents also contact me on my cell phone at area code 734-828-7010. Again, 734-828-7010. Once again, it is my pleasure to, to stand up for you. And in closing, I just wanted to also state, I've had a lot of people in the community reach out to me in terms of some of the concerns that they have when watching the council meetings or some of the things that they feel are unfair as it relates to me and some of the things that they, they witness here, even some, regarding some of the conversation that took place earlier tonight. And I would just like to, you know, just let the, those of you who have reached out to me and maybe those of you who I haven't had an opportunity to meet yet, I just would like to say that it is not easy being in a position to have to stand up for yourself. You know, everyone wants to walk into a situation to where it's ready-made and, you know, there's no issues, but there is an adjustment that is going on with me being new to council, and I thank God for that, that opportunity. I, I just ask that people don't pity me, but if you, you know, are a believer that you continue to pray for me, and please know that I am going to continue to stand up. I'm not going to be broken, I will not be moved. I said that the night that I was sworn in. I was elected because the citizens of Westland wanted someone to come in and represent them. And although even with all the opposition and me not being, I didn't grow up in Westland, and many people in the community didn't know who I was, and I didn't have the support of many of the people who sit here with me. On election night, I came in first place in election day votes with only three votes differing from me and Mayor Wild with all of the opposition that I faced. So regardless of what happens here, we actually do have a good working, a positive working relationship. And it'll get better in time, but I'm not going anywhere. And I'm going to continue to stand up because when the election happened, if I didn't know anything else, I know that although there was a narrative of vote for anybody but Tasha, the residents said, "We want you to represent us," and that's who I'm going to continue to represent. So no, it is not easy. But as I said on election night, they have the right one, and the right one is me. I am the people's candidate, and I'm going to continue to stand up for you, and I appreciate your support, and please know that I'm going to begin to have community meetings of my own. And if people would like to assist me with having meetings within the community as a business owner and also as a professional, I have a lot of contacts. So I, the meetings that I plan to have in the city are going to hopefully benefit the residents in a way that, that has not happened before. But if you would like to work with me, please do reach out to me. I'm definitely looking for volunteers who would like to assist. And I'm going to continue to stand up, as I've stated, because I'm, there's people who are coming behind me as people who came before me, stood up and made a way for me to sit here tonight. And whether it's more women in the future, or minorities, or people who will walk in here with an independent mind like myself and ask questions when you feel that a question needs to be asked and, and, and vote no, if it does not sit right in your spirit, I'm going to continue to do that, and I do it proudly, and I thank the residents of Westland. And please know, I'm going to give you the absolute best four years I can possibly give you, and I thank you again for that opportunity. Thank you.
Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start off tonight by also thanking all of our Blues Brews and Barbecue volunteers. I've always said this in the past, that that event is not as successful as it is without them volunteering. They do an awesome, awesome job out there. They spend a lot of time, a lot of their, their free time during that event. So thank you again, and it's glad to see some of those funds going back to them so that they can use in their, their volunteer groups. I also want to thank our Parks and Rec Director, Brian Harnos, for making it a priority to get our soccer fields up and running for the fall. I know the Wayne Westland Soccer League has really been looking forward to getting back on that field. It's, it's been a concern of that league, and I know they're excited to get back out there this fall and play there. So that's, thanks a lot for all your work, Brian, for what you did on there. I also want to make sure that we invite everybody out for the Ford Road visioning sessions that are coming up. It's important that the, our residents come out to those. It's important to hear your feedback, your contributions. So, you know, hopefully that you can try to make it to those so that we can hear what you'd like to see happen on Ford Road. I also want to also thank Mr. Thompson and Mr. House for all your work that you guys have been doing on the economic development side. I think it says a lot about the confidence that developers are having in the city of Westland by all the different agenda items that you saw from planning and economic development standpoint tonight. And last, I just want to send out my condolences to the Turner family on the passing of Ed Turner. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilman Hart.
Thank you. Again, thank you to all the Blues Brews Barbecue volunteers, all the civic groups that came out. I, I think the strength of the community is really drawn on its active citizenry, and that's exactly what we do, and that's why we have such a strong program here in Westland. A lot of active civic groups, so thank you. We had a good opportunity to put $20,000 in their pocket, and I'm pretty sure they're just going to put it right back into the community, doing good for the city and everybody here. So that's what it's all about. Really exciting, too, today, all of the new development. I remember when I was speaking to a lot of you folks, what are we going to do about Kmart? What are we going to do about Fire Mountain? You know, what are we going to do about some of these big box stores? Well, guess what? There's something being done. We have a multimillion dollar banquet facility coming into the Fire Mountain, which is really exciting for me. Long are my dreams, I guess, of opening a microbrewery there. I guess we'll have to put that on pause for some other venture, but really looking forward to that large banquet center. And more so concerning was the Kmart. We were really concerned about the Kmart. A lot of us were. U-Haul's coming in and making a state-of-the-art facility right here in Westland again. So really exciting, a lot of other things coming in. So again, once the domino falls, it continues to fall, and it continues to spur development, so it's really exciting. Wanted to let everybody know that Saturday, this Saturday, September 8th, from 2:00 to 4:30, at the Community Financial Credit Union, that's the one across the street from the mall, another recent development here in the city of Westland, they're going to be hosting a community shred day. So all of your bills, all of your credit card statements that you keep stuffing in that big bag because you don't want to put it in the trash can, you finally can have something done with it, take it there, they're going to shred it for you for free. So again, that's this Saturday, September 8th, from 2:00 to 4:30 at the Community Financial Credit Union. With that, I will say really quick, God bless to our Queen of Soul, Aretha Franklin, and God bless the family of Senator McCain. Thank you.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. I'll also take a brief moment just to thank our Parks Director, who started earlier this year. He's really made a difference in all of our parks, even outside of the Parks Department. He's, it's compared to what the parks were a year or two ago, he's really put in a lot of effort into getting the programming back, rebuilding things to the parks, and just making sure they're cleaned up, inspecting them every week. He's really gone all out. As far as economic development goes, as Councilman Hart said, some of these developments tonight are going to, they're at our major intersections in town. They're going to really make a difference of the way the city looks as you're driving through it. The U-Haul at Cherry Hill and Wayne might not be the most exciting thing, but it is a big business. They are going to adhere to the DDA streetscape, both on Wayne and Cherry Hill. It's going to look really good. The Conference Center, I'm, I'm most excited about. That's for business conferences and things like that. This is really going to put Westland on the map for a lot of people who maybe never heard of the city before. And then I look forward to being a part of the visioning workshops on the Steering Committee coming up next week. And if anybody wants to attend, that's September 12th through the 15th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. right here at City Hall. Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking Sarah Austin for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I, too, would like to extend my condolences to the Turner family, and we don't have any of the details yet. We just found out about it this afternoon. So again, my condolences go out to the, the Turner family. Ed was a longtime school board member, also was on our library board back probably when it was the first, one of the first library boards that was formed. So he's, he's long been active in, in this community. And finally, I, too, would like to thank all the volunteers and Mike for, for working with me on the, getting all the volunteers. This was the first year we opened it up to a lot of other groups, and we had more volunteers this year for Blues Brews and Barbecue than we have ever had for, for the two-day event. And it worked out extremely well. Things were well organized, the grounds were kept clean. Matter of fact, the court workers, the, the second, or the Saturday, the day after the first event came in and were upset because everything was already cleaned up. They didn't have anything to do, so they got put onto another duty that wasn't quite as easy as picking up the trash from, because there wasn't any at Blues Brews and Barbecue. So again, thanks to all of those groups and, and people that stepped forward to work that event. We, we tried a new system this year for, for doing it. We also solicited feedback on what we could do better next year and have already started working on formulating some of those ideas into next year's plans. So again, thanks to everyone that, that helped out with that event. Is there a motion to adjourn?